All right, welcome everyone. This is the School District of Prescott Board of Education Regular Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Subject Section 1983 of Wisconsin State Statutes. Our next item up is to adopt the agenda, doctors, because is there any changes?
There are no changes from the administrative side.
Okay, board will need a motion to adopt the agenda.
A move to adopt the agenda is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries item three is Pledge of Allegiance. Steve would you care to lead us?
Sure. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and this is the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, liberty, civil, and liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item four, recognition of visitors. Anybody in the audience that would care to be recognized at this time? Yep, just approach your podium and just state your name and municipality, please.
I'm worrying out, well, I'm a resident of Prescott and I have grandchildren in the Prescott School District. I'm going to speak to something that's much later on the agenda tonight, but I wasn't sure how fast you'd get to that, so. I got my certification in Language Arts and Social Studies in 1972, and I started substitute teaching that same year. And I could haul, I could have you all rolling on the aisles with my experiences of substitute teaching. Whoever thought that middle school kids could be so antsy and so clever in how they can really take on a substitute teacher? But, or how often they needed a hall pass to run to the bathroom? I mean, they really had me going. But it was my first year of teaching in 1973 that I came face to face with the inadequate funding of our public education systems. My first teaching assignment was in a special public school for students aged 15 through 21 who had dropped out or were kicked out of the other public schools. A pretty tough assignment for a first-year teacher. But I arrived full of optimism and very idealistic. I walked into a classroom that had three English grammar books dating to the mid-1950s and no desks. I panicked. The students assigned to me were to arrive the next day. Where would they sit, let alone what would they learn? I didn't, I thought there must be a curriculum someplace. So my fellow teachers, teachers who had a lot more experience in the district than I did, they were very sympathetic, but they just laughed at my dilemma. They told me there were no books or curriculum. Teachers were expected to supply their own materials. And without the help of those colleagues, I would have walked out then and there. They lent me materials, they gave me ideas, they provided me with classroom sets of books to get through the first month, and they even managed to find me tables and enough chairs for 15 of the 18 students that came into my classroom the next day. Public education hasn't changed much since I began my career. Many schools in some districts, I hope, are better funded than the school I started in. But nonetheless, schools are still underfunded for the real needs of both teachers and students. And in my opinion, teachers are paid poorly for the time, effort, and complexities of schooling in the world around us today. Public funding for education in our country has always been mostly in local control. And how much funding and how it is to be used has always been contentious. Our expectations of what education should be are often contentious as well. But we have to educate every student who walks in the door. That's what public education does. They don't educate for specific parents' concerns. They take that child where that child is and educate that person, that person. The purpose of publicly funded education hasn't changed much since the earliest time of our country's establishment. Public schools reflect our nation's and our local community's values. Generally, those values fall into four large categories that have been around through the 19th century at least. We expect public education to prepare people to enter a workforce that increasingly needs workers who have more than a fundamental grasp of literacy, including modern technological competency. We believe that an educated citizenry is absolutely critical for the preservation of a democratic form of government. We hope that a common schooling experience will help unify a diverse population, not just provided by providing a culturation for the thousands of immigrants who arrive each year, but for varying cultural, religious, and social differences among the families who mingle in our schools. Finally, we espouse that a common education will provide some equalization among the differing economic classes, making this country less susceptible to class warfare and closer to an ideal of an equal opportunity for each citizen. The common good is served by an educational system that has the financial means it needs to meet the values we express. And I'd like to encourage all of us to vote yes on the April 5th school referendum. This request is for financial support that will improve the physical facilities of the oldest buildings in our school district that are used daily by teachers, students, and also community members. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anybody else care to be recognized? Okay, we're going to move on to item five, good news around the district. Start with Shay.
We'll start with you.
All right, the Student Council signed, we passed and signed and sent our letter to the 26 districts in Wisconsin that still have Native American logos. I just wanted to highlight a couple sentences here from our letter. It states, "We firmly believe that race-based imagery increases stereotyping and racism towards marginalized people by overshadowing accurate and respectful representations of a certain culture. And we firmly believe educational institutions should not tolerate discrimination or harmful behaviors which race-based imagery promotes. In order to establish a safe and respectful learning environment for students, race-based logos, specifically Indian logos, must be removed." So that was part of a letter that was sent out to 26 superintendents and 26 student councils. And also, Student Council is starting to plan a spring fling, hopefully the week of prom, and we're already getting ready for our election for next year's Student Council.
Thank you.
Good evening, Josh Figgy, Prescott High School Principal. I wanted to just highlight Jason Canfield and the Prescott High School Band. Last week during our spring break, the band kind of culminated a four-year plan of going down to Disney in Orlando and doing a workshop for three hours with a Disney composer. And they actually worked on the Moana medley. That was the soundtrack that they composed to with a professional. And then performed for a large crowd at Disney Springs for about a 25-minute set. And this was the culmination of a lot of work by Mr. Canfield, Kathy Miller, I want to give a shout out to her, our finance department, our district nurse, the 20-some chaperones that we had go down, and then especially the kids who were amazing representatives and ambassadors for our district. And I heard a lot of compliments from people that were not from our community, were not even from our state, not only about their musical acumen, but just about how they conducted themselves in each of the parks, our resort, and on the flight. So a huge shout out to all the people involved with that. They did a tremendous job representing our district and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kyle Lego, Prescott Middle School. I want to start tonight by recognizing Ms. Michelle Jansen and our sixth-grade Math Masters teams. It was up there in the scrolling pictures before the meeting tonight. But the sixth-grade Math Masters team competition took place at St. Croix Central Middle School on Friday, March 4th. Eighty-eight students competed individually, and 19 different teams were there from several area schools. Scarlett Butler on one team earned an award for placing ninth out of the 88 individuals in the fact drill. And Benny Barker earned an 11th place out of the 88 in the individual rounds. So congratulations to our Math Masters and Ms. Michelle Jansen for that competition. The next thing I'd like to highlight is our Prescott Middle School library, our reading programs, and Ms. Donnelly Meyer and Ms. Joan Simon. They've put together a variety of programs here in the month of March that hopefully your students have been talking about, whether it had to do with Read Across America that took place on Wednesday, March 2nd. We had individuals from every single grade level sign up for a 30-minute reading slot that started at 7:30 in the morning and ended at 3:30 in the afternoon. And that was a great reading event. We've had the March Madness of library books that our students have been voting on since March 1st of the books that they have read, their favorite books that they've liked. Right now, our final two books and the winner of our competition will be announced on Friday is between Maze Runner and Hunger Games. And our final thing that is occurring in our libraries, we just did a little bit of a circulation count. Our circulation numbers so far this year through March 3rd is we had 4,133 books checked out. To date, from the previous year, that's 2,366 more books that were checked out this year than last year, and it is 312 books more than the previous year than that. So congratulations to our students. We are back to our culture of reading, we're embracing it, and our library is really doing a nice job up there. So thank you to them.
Thanks, Kyle.
Michael Kusowski, Intermediate School. Actually, I want to start with a teaching and learning. Just a big congratulations and thank you to the staff and students. The National Assessment of Educational Progress, or the NAEP, occurred in our fourth grade in early March, and 50 of our students got to participate either in math or ELA. And that was really a well-run assessment by the national organization. And then our juniors, just before break, took the ACT online again for the second year in a row. And I know Mr. Figgy held a make-up session today, we only have two students left on that, so we're nearly done with ACT, just in time to roll forward into our dynamic learning map and forward exam at our three through eight level. So that will be coming up this month, and our students will be testing in math, reading, writing, listening, science, and social studies. So that's from teaching and learning. From the Intermediate School, we have four Destination Imagination teams this year. We'll be having a showcase next Monday, so everyone is invited to the Intermediate School next Monday, 5:45, to see those different performances that our students wrote and then put on. We have one team, the Microwaves, that will be participating in the state competition on April 9th, and we wish them well in Green Bay. Lastly, congratulations to our National Current Events League teams. We have both a fourth grade and a fifth grade team. Nationally, both teams placed third again this year. In each grade level, our top three for the grades, in fifth grade, we had Logan Riley, Claire Schultz, and Alexa Droward. And in fourth grade, our top three were Rainer Haig, Caleb Sicard, and Ethan Stokel. So congratulations to those students and to Ms. Jansen for putting this together and making sure our students could participate.
Sarah Dusick, Principal at Malone Elementary. If you were one of the people who stood in line for the donut fundraiser for 45 minutes, you'll know it was successful. They were in partnership with North Star Donuts and the Malone Parent Committee as we keep taking steps to get more updated playground equipment at Malone Elementary. Malone Elementary, or the Malone Parent Committee is also working to put together a carnival to once again support staff and students and raise money. The carnival will be on April 29th, and currently, teachers and students are working on putting together the baskets for the silent auction for parents to view and purchase at the carnival. And then last, I want to shout out to Faith Seaworth, our new K-5 music teacher. She is in the process of preparing all K-5 students for a spring concert, and Malone Intermediate will be doing their spring concert on May 3rd, and Malone Elementary will be doing their spring concerts on May 4th. They'll be up here in the high school gymnasium, both nights starting at 7:00.
I didn't get to wait in line, but I did get donuts.
He knows somebody.
That seems like cheating exercise, Mark. All right, couple of good news in the worlds of Special Ed and Student Services. Earlier this month, we were, received our joint federal notification that we were in full compliance with the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That is a notification that's based 50% on compliance and 50% on results. So just wanted to do a huge shout out to the entire special education staff, as well as their general education colleagues in all the work they do in supporting and educating our students served by IEPs. In addition, earlier this month, we were also notified that we received $28,000 from the Get Kids Ahead Initiative through the state of Wisconsin, which will allow us to do additional mental health evidence-based initiatives and work with some additional mental health staff. So good news there as well.
Thanks, Mark.
Good evening, Rick Montreal, Dino Students, Prescott High School. A couple things to share with you tonight. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to represent the Prescott School District by taking part in UWRF's along one Teacher Candidate Professional Development Day. Now, the first part of the day was spent in a mock interview process where I had the chance to interview five soon-to-be graduates. Each of them did really, really well. The second part of the day was set up as a career fair, where about 100 or so future teachers were able to walk through the gallery and visit different districts from around the region. Prescott School District made several solid connections with future educators, and that will potentially help in our upcoming hiring season. The second thing I want to share is a bit of news about our inclusivity club's bracelet making Bonanza. We didn't know if we were going to go with Bonanza or Bash, but either way, something we're putting on on April 10th at 6:30 PM at the high school library. Now, the goal of the event is to promote our inclusion awareness, as well as show support toward various groups and topics, and we hope to see you there.
Thanks, Rick.
Always last.
It's okay, I'm okay with being last. Andrew Caudill, Activities Director. First thing, on Monday, we opened up our new and improved weight room, Phase One being complete. I know the student athletes, coaches, everyone's really excited with it. We have new flooring, new platforms, new equipment, a nice painted wall and artificial turf. I know the kids and the coaches are extremely impressed by the work that was done, and we couldn't have done it without our sponsors, QuickTrip, Tax, Packard Holdings, and Serna House. Moving into spring sports, the Middle Border has a new contest called the Middle Border Cup, and Prescott is currently in first place heading into spring season. So we expect to field a very strong spring sports slate, so we have a good, good chance at that. Our forensics program is state-bound, they will be at DeForest High School on April 9th to compete in our state championships. Spring sports are underway. Kids and coaches are excited to get started, be even more excited if they could be outside, and we're hoping to get outside soon. And finally, Ben Roll and Liz Roll will be Prescott's nominees for WIAA Scholar-Athlete. Both will be honored by the Middle Border Conference at a banquet recognizing the 16 Middle Border Conference nominees on April 6th at St. Croix Central. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. I just wanted to, as the pictures go behind me, wanted to just share my extreme gratitude, both to the school board, to the administrative team, and to our staff. This is the first week back after spring break, and you've seen both that we had students traveling across the country, engaged in learning opportunities.
traveling across the country, engaged in learning opportunities down in Florida. We had our forensics teams competing. They will be putting on a show here on April 5th, and I'll be in the Performing Arts Center if you'd like to see some of our state-bound forensic students. But also, you heard three specific times where we had business partnerships. So with Malone Elementary, with the playground, working with Afton Apple, the donut line. We also had the weight room, which, over the spring break, I just wanted to share the amount of work that our custodians, Mike Huica, put together, painting the weight room, taking down the weight room, and having it replaced with flooring all over within the five days that we were closed. In addition, we've updated some windows here at the Prescott High School. They redid the middle school stage, sanded and, and varnished that. I would like to thank Sue Gertis with the finance. We did get approved on the first submission of our S R three. You understand there are three buckets. The first bucket is three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. There's another seven hundred thousand that we're waiting for the federal government to approve, but her budget was submitted early. It has been approved and we'll start to make those claims. And then lastly, wanted to just recognize, and it's almost like the Academy Awards here, but not completely, no audience participation please, but we did, if you could just zoom in on this, Mr. Flaherty. It is, just in recognition of our food service and the breakfast program, they are the Breakfast Hero Award for 2002 to Maggie Schmidt and all of our nutritional service team. So we will keep that and deliver it to them at the after-party. And that's it for tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to item six, school business. First item is the consent agenda. In the consent, we had February 16th, 2022, regular board minutes, board checks, non-licensed personnel, retirement, resignation, employment, change of non-licensed staff, and the MOU with Greater Smile Annual Dental Outreach Program. Is there anything in the consent agenda that the board would like to remove? If not, I will adopt the consent agenda. Are there any objections? No objections, the consent agenda is adopted, we'll move on, thank you. Item B is consider retirement resi-, consider retirement resignation and hires of licensed staff.
Yep, at this time, we do not have any retirements announced. We do have one resignation, Taylor Mickel, who is a special education middle school teacher.
Any questions or comments from the board on this one? Okay, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to accept the resignation of Taylor Mickel, special education teacher at the end of the school year 2021, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one carries, and then item three is the new hire.
We do have a new hire, Jamie DeRose. She is currently working at Malone Elementary. It was posted in weekend and interviewed by the elementary administrator, and we are putting her forward for a full-time position for the fall of 2022.
Any questions or comments from the board on this one? Now, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to accept the hire of Jamie DeRose as elementary teacher for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Item C is consider approval of Tim Phillips as the new head coach of Prescott Cross Country.
I'm going to have our A.D. come forward.
Give me one second, Andrew.
Yeah, sure.
It is linked on your agenda. I came in a little late with sharing rights, but we're all good now, sorry.
Perfect. Andrew Caudill, A.D., honored to, to present Tim Phillips be our next head coach of Prescott Cross Country. Introducing Tim, he was a successful track athlete in high school. He ran the, the four hundred and eight hundred meter. He had the opportunity to run track, play baseball and football in college, the D3 level, instead chose to go to University of Iowa and earn a degree in biomedical engineering. He became a distance runner after that on his free time, ran twenty-six marathons in twenty-one states. So he's learned about distance running and training methods through his experience, and he enjoys and it's his passion to pass that knowledge on, onto young runners. His years of coaching experience include baseball, softball, wrestling, track, and cross country. He's in his second year as an assistant coach here in our Prescott Track Program, and he serves as an assistant coach in the Prescott Cross Country Program. In my conversations with Tim, he has a, so much passion and a lot to say about the kids in, in our athletic program, specifically cross country, so I asked him just to summarize what his vision is. And he said, "The Prescott Cross Country provides a wholesome sports experience for all student athletes from the most competitive runners all the way to the athletes who just want a healthy social endeavor. Our program emphasizes proper training, nutrition, rest, and emotional well-being and a framework of individual and team competition. We recognize and celebrate accomplishments in an atmosphere that strives to get the best out of everyone. We take pride in representing our families, our school, and our community, and we have a lot of fun along the way." And he said, "I want to help put Prescott Cross Country and track on the map while we give our student athletes a great sports experience." To go over the process, when I have an opening for a head coach, I review the program and all the assistant coaches. Any assistant coach is eligible to be considered for an appointment or a promotion if all three things are met that I have on my, in my evaluation. First, the knowledge of the sport is proficient. Coach Phillips played a significant role in developing practice plans and training plans for our student athletes in both track and cross country. His experience with distance running provides expertise in the field to our student athletes. Second one, strong and positive relationships with our student athletes. The student and athlete evaluation of Coach Phillips is excellent in all areas related to sport and to the student-athlete well-being. Individual student athletes labeled Coach Phillips as a major contributor to individual and team success. If you don't know, all of our athletes, whether they're sixth grade all the way to twelfth grade, do complete an evaluation of all of their coaches. The high school, I take them in Cardinal time at the middle school. Mr. Igo allows me to come during lunch, and that information is gathered and put together by me, and it helps give me and coaches an opportunity to see where, where they stand with their students. And third, the program performance is currently strong, and Prescott in our cross-country program, we are expected to be a championship contender as we have a ton of talent and the kids are hungry to, to go out and, and do excellent work. So if all three areas are not satisfied, an open search is conducted. So in my evaluation of Coach Phillips, he's knowledgeable in the areas of the sport to provide superior instruction to student athletes to learn, develop, and master the skills of the sport. He is beloved by his student athletes and is very important to me, and is respected by parents. Coach Phillips is a tremendous fit for our program and provide a tremendous experience as we continue to grow the program. He is my confidence and support, which is why I'm excited to recommend his appointment as the next head coach of Prescott Cross Country. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board on this one?
Yeah, I've got a couple. First of all, I have no problem with Tim Phillips. I've met him, he's coached both my kids, so I think it's a great hire. The kids really seem to respond to him, they really seem to like him, so I think they'll work hard for him, so I think that's great. I don't know if Dr. Pecusa shared with you an email I sent to him and Mike Madsen earlier this week. If he has, great, if not, you know, we'll talk over the next couple of months, but process is important for some of this stuff. So you did a great job of explaining what you did. I was just wondering if this was open to candidates, if, if other people were considered or if there was any interest from anyone at all.
Yeah, so in my process, I look at the internal, internal hires, our assistants, and if an assistant coach meets all three of these criteria, and I believe they're, they're a great fit, I'll go ahead with, with an internal, internal appointment. If all three of the criteria are not met, then it would be, it would be opened up for, for a full search.
I appreciate that information. I think we're going to need to get a little bit more of that detail, or just so people understand the process that you're working with. I think we can support that, I know I can, so appreciate the information tonight.
Sure, absolutely.
Anything else, board? Anybody? All right, thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
We'll take a motion here.
I'll move to approve Tim Phillips to be the new head coach of Prescott Cross Country.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. We'll move to item D, designation of surplus materials for sale.
I'm going to have Mike Huica join me. Earlier, you received, and I talked a little bit about that, we're going to probably have one of the biggest garage sales ever in Prescott School District. As you know, we have some buildings down on Young Street, and since I've been superintendent, the furniture has been, excess furniture has been placed down there, and I'll ask Mike just to kind of describe how those facilities are dehumidified, air-conditioned, heated, but none of those desks, wood desks and things like that that have been down there have ever been touched. We also have materials, and we have a spreadsheet for you of the different types of materials, but Mike, do you want to just describe what's in Young Street and what the conditions are?
Yeah, the Young Street storage down there, a lot of that furniture, some of it's been in there for ten, ten years at least, a lot of it, you know, between five and seven years. It's discontinued student desk, tables that were taken on classrooms, they were no longer, or furniture was replaced them. It's this, it's a storage area that's not climate controlled, so when it gets hot and humid, the stuff gets moldy and mildew, and if we pull some out, we have to do a lot of cleaning and stuff, but we haven't pulled anything out of there in years. So we're just storing a bunch of stuff. We do use the area to store our trailers in and some aluminum ramps and some other equipment during the winter, but it's getting full of non-used furniture that's down there. There's, you know, like pile cabinets that they're no longer used, they're different styles, don't match up what we have, no locks or whatever, or they're partly broken. So we keep some of the stuff, salvage what we can for parts, but a lot of it is beyond that, so that's in that area, so. Idea of that. As far as stuff from the shop area, that is stuff we saved and we did remodeling and replacing of HVAC equipment. There was some shop equipment when we opened the new high school that couldn't have been brought up here because it didn't meet the new safety standards or didn't have the proper guards and stuff to use that equipment, or it was not usable anymore. So we've been storing a lot of that equipment, we don't use anymore. We have some old snow blowers and weed trimmers that we've salvaged as much as we could off of them for rebuilding, just stuff we're not using anymore, so. And a lot of that's been probably sitting around at least five years, so. We're looking, we'd like to, you know, either sell it, some of it we can put on auction, some of it the auction houses won't take, so.
And so one of the reasons that we're bringing it forward is there is a policy, there are kind of two distinctions. Anything that is identified as five thousand dollars or more at time of purchase does have to go on our assets, and that is then depreciated across time, and that is part of the Clifton Larson annual audit that occurs. We do have some old equipment that Mike has saved mainly for parts, but now it's now another generation beyond, and the price is no longer at five thousand dollars. However, it was not officially removed from our assets, so just to be in line with policy and state guidelines, we have to bring it to you. In addition, Mike has worked with an auction house in Baldwin.
Yep.
What, pardon me?
Yeah, it was in Baldwin.
In Baldwin. And one of the things is that both us and Ellsworth have a bunch of desks. When Ellsworth built their new and consolidated into a new elementary, they purged a lot of old furniture. Both of us are going to the auction house at the same time, and the market for old desks has kind of almost disappeared. So what we're left with is, we, before we toss anything, we would be offering either a short window for people to purchase or pick up for free any of the materials at a window, a short window so that we're not distracting on our employee time. Anything that is worth value or still on our assets, that would have to be offered for sale before we would either scrap it or dispose of. And so we're just asking permission for us to sort those things and then, depending on the market value, get rid of it appropriately.
Tanya, any questions on this one?
Um, maybe just a clarity for myself. We were, there's two policies linked to this. One of them is seven-three-zero-zero, and it relates to real property. There's no real property though, right?
Some of, yeah, so real property is real estate, but it also does sometimes cover things that are over five thousand dollars on the asset.
Oh, that does fall under real.
Yeah, so, and it, not always, but there is an overlap, so just to cover, we wanted to make sure that you understood, both policies could be enacted at this time.
Okay.
But we're not getting rid of any real estate, I should clarify that.
And just so everybody that's here and listening, the other, the other policy that relates to this is the seven-three-ten, which is personal property, right? Okay, thank you.
Pat?
No questions.
Steve?
Hey, where's the, where do the dollars end up? Where do they land after the auctions? Do they go back to the building to maintenance or?
I'm not sure where that would.
By default, it has to go to front ten.
Front ten, okay. Okay. And I was just going to say, if you have a surplus of wooden desks that you're unable to sell, people who know me will tell you that I have a, a use for them, so.
You have a use for them?
He has a fire pit.
Oh.
Thanks, Tanya.
We're happy to.
Rather clarify than have people wondering.
All right, Vicki.
Um, the one policy says periodic review. Is this, since all these policies just kind of came into play, what, four years ago? Is this probably the first time any of this has ever really happened, decide to finally go through this stuff and?
Yeah, we have not.
Yeah, it really is. The last time we disposed of anything, you know, maybe it was junk, it was, we went down there with the principals and whoever, is there anything they can use out of here, whatever? It was some old desks and stuff that had been around probably even before I started here that we got rid of. So we really haven't got rid of anything like this in quite a few years, so.
So instead of waiting till you almost run out of storage, I guess what is kind of your suggestion, or do you have an idea of like how often you might want to actually go through this sort of stuff instead of letting it pile up?
I think moving forward, as we replace like furnitures and fixtures, I think we deal with it right then and there at that time. Because if we're replacing something, we're replacing because we're no longer using it.
Right.
It's not the style or the configuration we need for a classroom, or it's just, it's shot.
Yep.
So I say we deal with it right, right away at that time. Sometimes when it gets to be snow blowers and weed trimmers and stuff, you know, we'll, we'll use it, because we try and buy multiple snow blowers and weed trimmers, so as one wears out, we can, you know, maybe take parts from this one and keep them going longer, so that we'd probably still continue.
Okay.
But as far as any HVAC upgrades, equipment, you know, we did save some ceiling fans and stuff because they might have worked in another school. Well, now they're old enough that, you know, we're, we're probably going to want to switch them, go to a high-efficiency type fan and that, so those will probably evaluate as we move forward on, but.
Because, yeah, I guess if you haven't ever found the need to go back in there and grab that sort of stuff, then, yeah.
No.
I, I would agree with you that we don't necessarily need to, you know, hang on to stuff then.
We keep a few chairs and stuff, you know, we, we know what's going to need for extra classrooms and stuff, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep some of that stuff, but, yeah, but majority of it, just get rid of at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Shay, any questions on there?
Nope.
Shay, new desk for college?
I was going to say, you got some dorm furniture waiting for you down there?
You know, my dorm room's already going to be pretty small, thank you.
It's all retro.
All right, thanks, Mike. We'll need a motion.
I move to approve designation of surplus materials for sale or disposal via auction house, scrap, salvage, or refuse based on value of materials to meet the disposition of personal property or disposition of real property.
I'll second it.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then when carries were on. And that one Kerry's, we're on item E, consider Patacs. A local business partnership to provide PSD with two hundred and thirty-five thousand for electronic digital scoreboards.
And our athletic, our activities director, Andrew Caudill is back. I wanted just to, uh, point out that there are actual two separate kind of, um, motions that would be part of this. First is if it's accepted to move forward with this, uh, wonderful opportunity, then there would be a second motion to, um, approve the, uh, sponsors. But we didn't wanna get ahead of ourselves and put it all in one, so, Andrew?
Perfect, thank you, um, Andrew Caudill, A.D. I, I'm really excited to, to present this to you. It's been a project that has been worked on since October. Um, I am also joined by Christopher Kretsch from Daktronics. He has been our partner and has been really, really helpful, uh, to me. And I, I truly believe this project will be transformational, uh, for our department for, for years to come. So, uh, like I said, we're partnering with Daktronics. How this all came about is you may or may not know that the current football scoreboard is, well, it just doesn't work. It has, it was a very challenging football season being brand new. Uh, one of the worst secrets of the football season, if that Prescott-Ellsworth game would've been here, the board would've been unavailable cause it just didn't work, we couldn't get it fixed. Mr. Hoika was a trooper trying to figure out what's going on with All-American on the phone. What got me connected with Daktronics is that they were willing to send their tech people down here on very short notice to try to fix a board that wasn't even their product. And then from there, uh, we started talking and they introduced me to the, the video board, uh, products and sponsorship funding. So project details. First thing, the, the, kind of the, the gem of the project is one large video board in the high school gym. It will be on the side of the wrestling mats. The reason it's there is because it can provide some really interesting opportunities at graduation. Will require the removal of one side hoop attached to the wall. Small video board in the high school gym, a game shot clock on each main hoop in the high school gym. The repurpose of the current scoreboards in the high school gym to Malone Intermediate. A new football scoreboard and all installation is part of the project. So on the large video board, you see a picture on the left is what we currently have. Picture on the right is what it will look like when it's installed. Um, one thing you'll notice is that the board is actually further away from the hoop. Scoreboard should be in line with the sideline, so it gets it further to the sideline, which will actually correct some blind spots that we have in the gym. So every seat will be able to have access to see a board. And the project cost of this board is a hundred and forty-two thousand nine eighty-seven. Small board, you see the, uh, same thing on the left, what we have now, on the right is what it'll look like. You also see the boards are a little bit higher. Uh, we'll figure out with the soundboards, uh, with Mr. Hoika and his team. Little bit higher protects them a little bit more from, from being hit. Cost thirty-seven thousand forty-seven. Uh, game shot clock on each main hoop. Moving the scoreboards further away from the basket, it'll give players the opportunity to see a clock right in front of them and all the states around us have adopted a shot clock. There is a push in Wisconsin to have it, so we won't be caught off guard. We'll have the capability in the event Wisconsin does put that through. That cost is about thirty-six hundred. Football scoreboard, this is just a picture of what the new one will look like. Um, it's gonna be a little bit larger, require a new foundation, cause the current foundation out there won't be able to support it and that cost will be a little under fourteen thousand. So the cost breakdown of, of everything, um, as I talked about, there'll be sponsor signs on the football tower. Uh, that'll be over two thousand dollars, freight's about nineteen hundred, so the total cost of the, uh, products will be a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Throwing in the, uh, installation, outdoor installation a little over fourteen thousand, indoor installation a little over sixteen thousand. The hoop removal about one thousand, uh, for a total cost of a little over two hundred and thirty-three thousand. The hoop removal costs will be covered by, uh, the athletics, uh, fund twenty-one account. So how this works is, uh, for revenue, um, you can go back to the one before that. Do we not have that slide?
Well, actually, why don't we stop there to see if they're willing to, um, accept the offer from Patacs to front, uh, the money for the electronic board?
Yeah, so Patacs is willing, uh, to essentially be our financer of the project, which will be, uh, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, um, two hundred and thirty-two thousand eighty-two dollars. It's gonna save us a little over twenty thousand dollars in interest payments. Um, and it, and so then we would pay, uh, the tax back with our, um, sponsorship revenue.
So based on how this works, I, when I went through it, I kinda, I think we probably wanna see the whole presentation, guys, just to see how the.
I would agree.
How the payment, how this works. So if you don't mind, can we just, can we continue going and talk through?
Yeah.
How the sponsors work?
So for the first five years, we'll have ten sponsors. Each sponsor gives five thousand dollars for a total of fifty thousand dollars. Taking two hundred and thirty-two thousand eighty-two dollars divided by five gives a total deficit of forty-six thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. And so that would be, uh, revenue of thirty-five hundred. So the five, or the ten sponsors of five thousand apiece covers the, um, total deficit. So that is how it ultimately is paid for. On this slide where I talk about this project being transformational, starting in year six, there's no more lease. Which means athletics will generate fifty thousand dollars in sponsorship revenue a year, which will be able to be transferred right to teams, which will allow coaches to do a lot more things for their teams. It'll allow athletics to do a lot more things and it will, um, take a lot of burden off of individual fundraising. Smaller teams that struggle to fundraise will now have an opportunity to have fundraising dollars generated for them that will allow them to do a lot of cool things that they maybe aren't able to do now. This is what you see at Baldwin, Somerset, St. Croix Central that have these boards already. They're able to generate revenue directly to their fundraising for their athletics programs. So that's why when I say it's transformational, this isn't a very short, this is not short-term. After five years, there's no more debt and it's a hundred percent, uh, revenue to athletics.
So can I, if you?
Yeah.
Let's go back to the dollars because we've got slides duplicated in the presentation. It looks like maybe slide thirteen should be up on, in front of ten. I just need to understand the dollars and, uh, I need, I need a visual. Sorry.
Yeah, so, um, so the slide, there's a, there's a revenue slide for years one through five. So we have a total cost of Patacs, um, of, it'd be forty-six thousand dollars minus what they are contributing. And then we get all the sponsorship money from our sponsors and we essentially pay our debt every year for five years to cover then the total cost. So by Patacs finding the money, it saved us on, on interest payments.
So Patacs has given us a loan?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Do you have the other sponsors lined up already?
Yeah, so we have, um, I have a sponsorship slide, so we have.
Do you wanna put those forward? Cause partly is, he has done the work, we have nine of the ten. And we just didn't wanna, if you weren't gonna go forward with the board, we weren't sure you wanted to have the names of the potential sponsors.
I think we need the names of the sponsors yet, I think we just need to understand that how this is, how this all comes together.
Yeah, so on this slide, you'll see with Patacs. So currently we have Patacs lined up for three, three sponsorship, um, spots. Ideally, we like to get them down to two, so I'm still selling two more. And so the total debt of forty-six thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars minus what Patacs sponsorship cost would be cause we're not gonna make them pay since we're just gonna turn around and give it right back. So our total debt would be thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. Seven sponsors give us five thousand a year for thirty-five thousand dollars. So it is over what we owe by thirty-five hundred dollars, a little under thirty-six hundred dollars.
And that'd be per year?
Per year. And so if we can get this to, uh, where Patacs wants to land at two, then that would be ten thousand dollars and so we would generate forty thousand dollars in revenue.
So they were willing to take up the three advertising spots if we couldn't find a.
If we couldn't find enough.
Could you explain two things? One is, what is the Y-ten and are you going above ten? And then also what is the typical lifespan of a board?
Yeah, so Y-ten is because each sponsor, obviously there's, they get something out of this. And so if you, while it'd be really awesome to have thirty, well, it waters down what we're actually giving them. So there is some benefit to them and so I'll go over what exactly they get. So ultimately, we started kinda lower than that, but the interest was so high that we actually, the, the small video board is never gonna be a part of this. This, the interest was so high, we were able to take on more sponsors and add, and add to the project. And so that's why we landed at ten, we're still selling two. And so we feel very comfortable, we'll get the two part of what, uh, Patacs wanting to, to move forward was allowing us to go forward and not, not wait. Um, as far as the, the lifespan of the boards, um, Chris, would you be able to speak to that? You could maybe come up here and speaking of the mic, thanks.
Yes, I can speak to that a little bit. Christopher Kretsch, I'm with Daktronics. And just in regard to the life expectancy of the displays, so from a service standpoint, we will, we will, our service model is to promise to supply spare parts for ten years. That, that ten years starts ticking when we stop manufacturing a specific product line. So in this instance, this is one of our modern product lines, so we don't have any plans today to discontinue it. But when we do, um, that's when that ten years of spare parts will, will continue, or will kick in. In regard to, to our history, we've got about seventy school districts in the state of Wisconsin that have our digital, uh, displays back to, dating back to two thousand and eleven. And as of now, um, all seventy displays are still operational. So when we say our life expectancy, we say ten years because that is what we are willing to, to put in writing that we'll promise spare parts for. Any questions on?
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Chris?
I had a question about just repair and warranty kinda stuff, so I, I appreciate the parts. It sounds like minimum of ten years, cause this is, you know, still a new product. Um, what is warranty if something breaks or something happens, what does that look like?
Yep. So the warranty on the project, it's a, a five-year parts warranty, um, meaning anytime within five years if there's a, a component that breaks, um, we will ship that out next day at no cost. And then there's also a, a one-year bumper-to-bumper warranty on it, meaning we will physically come to the school and, and fix everything within that first year. And then how it works is year four, about month eleven, we will reach out and offer extended warranty services if you guys choose to, to, to take us up on that. And that is willing to, to be warranted again up to ten years.
Does your company do install and repair or do you, uh, outsource that?
So we, we've got a couple of different models, so we do have numerous field service engineers, um, just given the location here. We do have one in Wisconsin, however, he is, Tom May's down in Muskego. So in this market here, we would tap into the, the Minneapolis-St. Paul market where we've got two field service engineers. And then we also have an electrical, um, company who is our, our, our train service provider and Egan Electric as well.
Thank you.
I guess you're, you can, it probably.
Mike, I gotta.
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
Question, hey Andrew, you might've already put this up here. So when, at what year does this kinda break even with the sponsorship? So when, when, when are the boards paid for, what year?
So twenty-two, twenty-three's year one. So twenty-seven, twenty-eight would be the first year that we would be off the lease. So ev, so everything brought in is a hundred percent revenue.
So is that five, that's about five years?
Starting in, starting in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so just, just a question for Daktronics and you guys are awesome with views, you guys are stuffed all over the time. But, so with the video board, ten-year life expectancy, the video board, I mean, there's a little more technology, right? So you're looking around scoreboards, they might last ten years, they're often not hung up though for ten years, I shouldn't say often. But not to put you on the spot, but, or, or Andrew, so I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, it's ours after the fifth year, but probably shouldn't be banking on video technology still being applicable in ten. You know what I mean by that?
Yeah, I know, um, if you go to St. Croix Central, uh, out of the schools in our league that have video boards, they were the first ones to do it, so you can tell it looks, it looks older. So they don't do as much with it, but they're still able to do enough for it to generate, to generate the revenue. And so ours is probably more applicable to what you'll see at Somerset and Baldwin, um, than what you see at Central cause it, it just is able to, to do more.
Yeah. And then I guess, this is great, I'm just saying that we should probably be planning for that fifty grand, right? After year five, you know, at some point in time, we're gonna wanna replace technology. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Sorry for the downer message, but.
It's okay.
My job. Mike, I do have another comment, but maybe we need to get through the rest of the presentation. I, I don't know how you want this to keep going.
Is there more to present as far?
I have the, going into sponsors and like what they get. The money part of it, I presented all of that.
So on slide sixteen, it can explain what the ten individuals put up?
Yeah.
What the ten sponsors.
Yeah, let's go through that, cause I, I guess I, I had some questions on.
Yeah, so the sponsors will get, um, a sign on the football tower that faces out towards the parking lot. They get in-game advertising, uh, at boys wrestling, girls volleyball, dance, boys basketball and girls basketball, basically anything in the main gym. They get one game, they get one in-game feature entitlement during boys and girls basketball, for example, timeouts, three-pointers. They get a one promotional game for an indoor event, we're gonna really shoot for basketball on that one for them. They get two event passes to a regular season. They get one logo on all of the athletic department-generated programs, one logo in the weekly athletics newsletter, uh, website graphics and other events such as PCR, we're able to just put ads on in the gym and just let them just rotate. So that's what, that's what they all would get.
And Andrew, uh, with the sponsors, are we gonna be responsible for doing all of the, um, marketing and development and the aesthetics? Or does, is there some partnership there?
Yeah, so, uh, what's nice about the program is that Daktronics Sports Marketing Department will definitely do a lot of that. So what I'll do is they actually just reached out to me this week to put them in contact with the sponsors and they'll take the sponsors' logos, information from them, to start generating the graphics for them that we will have available to us to display on the board. So it really is a, a solid partnership, um, going forward.
The, I, I got a quick, does anybody else have any questions on the presentation at this point? I did have a couple, but I wanted to make sure I got two guys first.
I mean, ultimately, what we're saying here is, I mean, the only thing I'm concerned about is the, uh, the loan from Patacs from a policy standpoint and making sure we're, we're legally in the right of way, so to speak. But then, it's not costing the district anything to do this, so I think that's really key to, to point out that the work that Andrew's done with his, uh, his constituents, if you will, um, really offers a lot to the district that we don't have to pay for, so.
And the agreement, um, between us and Patacs on the receipt of that money, um, was run by Weld Riley.
Okay.
They're the ones that, um, actually constructed it from scratch and then you have met with Patacs. They've seen the legal agreement from Weld Riley and are supportive of it.
Yeah, so he's, he's gonna touch base with me and a chance to review it, but in principle, um, he wants to, to put the money forward in this project, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's fantastic, I had just a really couple of quick one, one here is probably Andrew. If we were to have issues with, uh, any of the scoreboards and it did cost money to repair, where, is that money coming out of your budget then? Or how, how'd that work?
Yeah, so, um, after the, the five years, we have a lot of flexibility in what we're bringing in. Going, we haven't really talked in depth about how it's gonna be distributed, cause that's five years from now. We haven't talked about what. We haven't talked about what, who would repair the board, essentially. I think in talking with other schools that have had Daktronics equipment, all the feedback has been really solid that they haven't had any issues, whereas that, that has not been said about other vendors, which is why I think for me, it was important to go with, to go with Daktronics. Those specifics haven't been ironed out, but the money generated, you know, would probably be the first step. And if we needed to, three thousand dollars or something, I, I would say it probably should come from the, the fifty. Because my ultimate vision of it would be that the athletics department would take a chunk, the rest would be go with the teams. The athletics department impact would go towards the boards, so the teams can continue to get their cut.
Mike, in fairness, right now, I mean, the district's on the hook anyway, right? So the scoreboard doesn't work, we're, I mean, we gotta prepare it.
Yeah, I agree.
Either way, so.
Yep. No, it's a good point. And then I guess the second point is, you know, the revenue being generated, let's, you get through five years and, and the lease is, is paid, and we, and it's, it becomes a revenue generator. Any thoughts on how you're going to manage that, or as a district, what are we going to do? I mean, it, it, there's, there's many athletic programs that aren't in the, in the gyms and the, and the football field that would probably benefit as well. So is, is that the plan to kind of spread it?
Yeah, so, so in talking with coaches, I think it's important that everybody sees the benefit from this regardless of where they play, especially teams that are smaller. When you look at what they fundraise compared to what a different team fundraises, it's pretty striking, the difference. And so one team buying an iPad is like, sure, why not? The other team, it's like, boy, how are we going to cover that? So I try to help those teams out. So what my thought is, if fifty thousand's coming in, just throwing out numbers here, let's say athletics gets fifteen, the other thirty-five is distributed amongst the other teams, a hundred percent equal. So football, dance, cross country, golf, they all get the same amount. That's where I'm, that's where I'm at. I, I think if we, if I tried to make it different, I would have to have a really good reason as, as to why. And so I think it's good for everyone to benefit from this, because when I talk to the sponsors, they really like the idea they could benefit athletics, not, I just want to benefit golf, I just want to benefit football, I want to benefit athletics. And then the last thing I'll say, to your point, what's really important for us? The sponsorship contracts or five-year contracts? So there's, so we need, me, we need to make sure that we deliver what we say we're going to do, so when the five years is up and it becomes a revenue generator, all, all ten sponsors are saying, I want a sign, I want, I want another five years. And that's why the other schools have been successful, because they are able to continue to maintain their sponsors to generate the revenue.
Great. Shay, did you want to jump in on anything here?
I mean, I think this is really cool. I wish I could be in athletics when this is up. But yeah, I think it's really awesome, the work you've put into it.
Yeah, and Andrew, I know you did a lot of the legwork to try to get this thing going. So, I mean, kudos to you to really, for, for taking the initiative and, and figuring out a way to get this done. It's really cool to see, I know I've been to a lot of gyms, and especially in the conference and other conferences, and it's definitely a popular trend to see these types of scoreboards, and Prescott is kind of staying with the pace of other, other districts. And, and to have it to be cost-neutral to the district, no taxpayer dollars, obviously that is a, well, that's a slam dunk, excuse the pun there, I guess, but.
A home run, maybe.
Great job.
Hey, Mike, Mike, I do got a question, though.
Yep.
Not to, sorry, you're kind of touchdown call step on it, but I got a little bit of concern. So the football scoreboard that's being presented is modest. And for those of you who've been around the program for a number of years, there's been a, a, a wild array of football scoreboard gaffs, and none of it having to do with, I mean, Mike's and, and his crew have done everything they possibly can over the years. But old boards, new boards, this one's modest. I would love to understand what type of, before things are ordered and plans are finalized, I mean, Daktronics, is there some, is there some sort of study that can be done, standing on the other side of the field or everywhere in the stands? That line of sight and size to, to numbers and all that good stuff is appropriate? And, and is at a minimum in the class of, of our other middle border district schools? I would, I would hate to put up a new board and, and have it be subpar, is what I'm saying.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's something that we talked about, and I know that in our first review of, of the board, we committed to a new foundation. Because I think that's why we've been limited, because we kept putting scoreboards on the current foundation out there, which cannot support anything much larger than what's already on it, so we are going to put a new, a new foundation in. The other part that I at least pondered is the, the cost of the football boards, maybe Chris can speak to this, are way more than indoors. I know that, just out of curiosity, I asked, so what would it cost to put a video board at football? And a nice video board at football probably is more expensive than this entire project. We're probably talking two, three hundred thousand dollars. He's shaking his head, yes. And so I know that this is a converse, I don't want to open up Pandora's box, but there's a lot of discussion, at least, I've heard a lot of discussion, people in the community on what's going to happen to Laney? What are we going to do at Laney? And so I'm, I'm aware of what we do there and, and leaving other options open. And obviously, this is how we got here, because I, we had to replace the board that's out there, and I had to find a way to replace that board, where maybe we just didn't have a lot of money to invest down there. And this presented itself as an opportunity to do something at the gym, while also incorporating the football field as a part of the, the larger project. But it is something that I am thinking about, on how we make things, continue to make things better down there. And we will do a, take a look at placement, because it sounds like we will have to move it, because they're going to, part of the installation to kind of save the ground, instead of ripping the metal out of the ground, they're going to cut it. So then you can't install on top of it, so the board's going to have to move probably to the left or the right. So I was going to collaborate with Coach Hanson on what he would prefer. I'm, I'm, without speaking for him, I would assume he'd probably say I want it on the home side of the goalposts. Also, we've talked about different, different places. I know Mr. Hoika chimed in with me that if we move too far, it could make it a lot more expensive install because of where electricity is. So I do think there's things to, to do down there. I just wasn't, honestly, wasn't sure how far I wanted to go in this project at that site.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, if, let's say Laney Field stays there forever, you can do bolt-on video boards and stuff on the side, there's a ton of stuff. I want to make sure that this board, and, and I'm not picking on this one, this one's, it's great, right? I want to make sure that it's big enough, because I just want to make sure that it doesn't get installed and someone can't read numbers from the other side of the field, so.
And I, I would just chime in, I, it is something that was raised, we've been looking at that, I think that we, we'll get the specs. I, I liked your idea about making sure you can see it at both ends of the field. We do have an issue of just timelines and supply chain, to make sure that if we're going to be able to have some of this stuff ordered, shipped, and installed, we have to kind of move forward. But I would ask Andrew that you would come back and alert us if we have to go a little bit bigger, what the price differential would be, and then we can figure out whether or not that can be met outside of this.
Yeah, and that's something we can definitely talk about. The good news is, is the football part of this can be, can get here much faster. So we're looking at a June install at football, we're looking at an August install at the gym. We're going to do the whole indoor project at once, so we wouldn't move scoreboards out of the high school gym until the other one's ready to go in, just in case, because we, you know, volleyball, we got to have something ready in here. So we can definitely take a look. Thirteen thousand is what the current, our board is right now that we're getting, but we can take a look at models just to see if, what the price points are on that.
Andrew, do you know, is this scoreboard comparable in size to our current one? Bigger, smaller?
The, at the football or in the gym?
Football, sorry.
Football is going to be a little bit bigger, just because it's going to be bigger. That's why we have to do the foundation, which is why the outdoor installation looks to be very similar to the indoor installation, it's because of the entire foundation, which is why I felt good about it, but we'll definitely take a look at it. But it is bigger than the current board. This, the whole thing is, but we have to make sure the numbers are good, so.
I just, I also want to just highlight, like, again, just the great partners we have in our community. So it's, I know there's probably a whole nother list if this gets approved, but even just having Patacs come up, and they have always been great partners with our school district, this is a good use of taxpayer dollars when we're saving twenty thousand dollars, it sounds like, just on interest, as well as just your foresight in revenue building and stuff. I think you've brought in a lot of really great opportunities towards our athletics and activities in here, and this is just another really good example of moving forward and having it sustain itself, as well as generating funds for our program, so it's, it's great.
Yeah, thank you. The currently athletics, the only revenue source we have is concessions. And when you have COVID and the rebound from COVID, we've seen a significant decline in concessions revenue, so it was important for us to take a look at what are other schools doing, and this is how schools are generating revenue, so ads.
Great. All right. So Rick, we want to move, we want to talk through this first motion, is that what we want to do?
That would be our preference, if you're willing to go forward. Again, this would be based on a, the contract that Weld Riley presented, shared with all of you in concept, already approved by Patacs. If you go forward with this project, then we would move forward with putting forward a slate of businesses that would be signing a second contract that's been reviewed as well, that are five-year agreements.
Okay. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion here?
Sure, I'll move to accept, I'll move, gee, Merry Christmas. I move to approve acceptance of Patacs' initial contribution to purchase electronic digital boards for PHS, with five-year advertising leases to cover cost of the scoreboards, two shot clocks above backboards, and a new scoreboard on Varsity Football Field.
I'll second.
We do have a motion to second. Any further dialogue on this, guys? Are, are we good with the five-year locking in as a motion to make it a five-year advertising lease, is that?
Yeah, that's the, that's the contract.
Somebody wants to do a two-year lease, they can't do it.
Because the idea of the program is it needs to cover the cost.
Yep.
And so after the five years, we can talk about it, but five years is generally the, the standard.
So then, five years from now, when we're all still on the board, we would come back and, and have to make another motion to, no, just kidding, yeah, there you go.
Well, and the contract's right to first refusal.
They do.
Right. All right, so we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Allen carries. So the next motion is for the ten business partners?
Yeah, so Andrew, you've already talked about what the sponsors get. You've been doing incredible legwork and have, and we'd like to share the slate of sponsors. As Andrew mentioned, Patacs has offered to cover three of the spots, to cover three different areas of their business. They would like to get it to two, if they could, but they would go up to three. Do you want to talk about the other businesses?
Yeah, so we have Croix Insurance, they were actually one of the first businesses we talked to, they were the first ones to, that we talked to that signed on. Hudson Physicians, if you're not familiar with them, they actually are a new provider for athletic training services. They have been fantastic in how they service our kids. We have an app now where we can, you know, text back and forth in real time on our students' medical needs. Serna House, New Adventures, Scenic Plus Dental, River City Stitch. I'm, I'm so grateful for these businesses, and not only want to support the project because it, it helps them, but that's not really what their focus was. Their focus was, this helps our communities, helps our student athletes, helps us give back to them and our coaches. And I'm grateful for their partnership and our vision for the program going forward. They all want Prescott to be the best of the best, and they see this as an opportunity to get us there. And as Dr. Spicuzza said, Patacs is willing to, to be at three, I am actively selling two spots. I have some pretty solid leads right now, it's just getting those, getting those closed to get us our ten.
Okay, any questions, board?
Yeah, I guess I just want to clarify sponsorship agreements. We have legal outs for, you know, we're in a litigious society these days, so understanding if somebody goes out the deep end and does something inappropriate, that we have a way to get out of that sponsorship, is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, that's one thing that Dr. Spicuzza and I have talked about, is an ethics clause in contracts, that's pretty common, just in case, so that if, if something happens that requires the district to want to break the partnership. And so we're still crafting the, the contracts, it's not as in-depth as the one for Patacs, but basically so there's understanding of what the partnership looks like between us and the sponsors. What the sponsors' requirements are to us, so how this works is that there'll be a date and time to where they pay their yearly sum to us, and then the Patacs contract will basically partner with that. That's so long after that, probably we're talking like thirty days, then our payment to Patacs is due. And we're looking at this happening in the summer, which lines up really well, because then we're ready to go for the athletic season. Having this happen during the school year might be kind of chaotic, especially if it's right in the middle of a season. And so that, that's how the contracts will be put together. And Daktronics has a template that we've been working off of.
And there were three concerns I had as we were working with Andrew and the sponsors would be, obviously, if a business, we don't wish this on anybody, but if they were to go out of business, what does that mean for us? And then obviously, we are on the hook to repay the loan to Patacs. Patacs has been very gracious in their agreement. Should another business go out and be unable to make the payment, they will hold us harmless until we sell to another sponsor. So there's a delay in that contract. Obviously, if somebody fails, one of these sponsors is unable to continue to make their payments, but they're still in business, there's a thirty-day ability for us to make the call. If they don't come forward, then we are able to then pull the sponsorship and move to another company. So there were kind of these ins and outs, both on the individual agreements, in case somebody wasn't able to follow through, and I think it's dovetailed quite nicely.
Well, it looks like your sponsor list is very well thought out, very appropriate, and ties into a lot of businesses within our community that are intertwined in all sorts of ways, so just continuing to strengthen those relationships is great. Thank you.
Yeah, I honestly, when I started this project, I set out three markets, Prescott, Hastings, River Falls. I thought I would probably have to cross the river to get some, I haven't had to cross the river once. And so Prescott has not only come forward for this, it has exceeded what our original thoughts were, and so that's great. This is definitely a Prescott-owned endeavor.
Okay. Take a motion.
I'll move to approve up to ten business partners, as a slate presented by PSDAD on slide twelve, to sign five-year advertising agreements to repay the Patacs contribution minus Patacs advertising portion, to cover the cost of the scoreboards, two shot clocks above the backboards, and a new scoreboard on Varsity Football Field.
I'll second.
There, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that carries. Thank you, Andrew, nice job.
Thank you.
Great work, thank you.
High school admin team, Andrew, thank you.
We're move on to item F, consider CCA eleven annual renewal of services contract.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, sorry. So on an annual basis, you all know that we have a partnership with CISA eleven forty-two, other districts participate. The contract was shared with you. Basically, we are renewing all aspects except for the business partnership, and, Michael, there was one other.
There's about innovative teaching and learning consortium.
Otherwise, it's exactly what we had in place, and we're asking for you to approve it, so we can submit it to CISA.
Have, have the cost gone up on any of these? I know that we've dropped a few, so, but.
Yeah, just, for the most part, very modest.
Any other questions, board? Just summarizing this, right, Rick, there was no new adds?
Correct, no new adds, and two.
Two drops?
Two drops.
Okay. All right. If there's no questions, we can consider a motion here.
I'll move to, oh, go ahead, Pat.
Sorry, Steve, I had an area. I'll move to approve.
I'll move to approve CC-11, the CISA 11 contract for the 2022-23 academic year as presented.
I'll second.
Flip a coin, give it to Tanya. We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Thank you. Item G is consider PHS early college credit program and the Start College Now.
Yeah, this is one of the kind of nice benefits of talking about our strong programming and our advanced academics up at the high school. Principal Figgy is going to come up and present that to you.
I don't have anything as exciting as video boards and sponsors. So this is something that we annually typically present two or three times, multiple times, depending on when our students are looking to access the programming. But at least two times a year, I will come to you and present about students looking to gain access to our early college credit or Start College Now program. For people who are listening, who are not aware, Wisconsin offers two different programs. One is the early college credit program, which allows high school students who are in grades 10 and above, who have satisfied certain criteria, to access four-year colleges for free at the expense of the district and the state, up to 18 credits. And there are some stipulations in that, and for the most part, we've rarely if ever run into those with our students because our students are really great about doing their four-year planning and looking at how they access our programs here before they get into looking at a local university or a Wisconsin university for their options. The second program is Start College Now, which is very similar to the early college credit program, only it's with tech schools. And so we'll have students who want to go to CVTC or another tech school in Wisconsin and take some of their courses that are offered there with their instructors. And once again, the district helps pay for those post-secondary credits that they're earning. At this time, looking ahead all the way to the next school year, we have two students currently who are looking to gain access to credits at UW River Falls. You can see both Student One and Student Two listed on the table up on the screen in front of you. Student One is looking to gain access to college courses in psychology, biology, sociology, and advanced algebra. One of the stipulations of ECCP that the districts use is the courses that students are seeking should be above and beyond what the district offers, or different in some way. And so each one of these four courses is different or above and beyond what we currently offer within our walls at Prescott High School. And then you can see the price breakdown. So you can see the average cost of a, of a credit at UW River Falls, early college credit. Students who gain access to the program, one of the benefits is students who are at a high school level accessing this program actually only have to pay half, or the district only has to pay half of that credit cost at the university. And then the state actually reimburses our district another 25% of the overall cost on top of that. So for student number one who's looking to gain or to access 12 credits next year in semester number one, it would only cost the district about $1,500 for that student to essentially get a full semester's worth of post-secondary credit. Student number two is looking to access two marketing classes. This is a student who, for the past three years, has made marketing and business a focal point for her pathway, and it's part of her four-year plan. The two courses here are above and beyond what we offer. She has essentially tapped out our business and marketing offerings. So you can see that the total cost after all the reimbursements and cost differential with the state is $743.04. So the total cost for these two students to gain 18 credits will cost the district $2,229. One of the policy considerations is we are in alignment with Wisconsin's recommendation that students be allowed to take no more than 18 credits without some sort of stipulation with the district. So both of these students, you can see on the one, two, three, four, fifth row of the, or I'm sorry, fifth column of the table, have never accessed this program before. So this would be the first, these would be the first credits they're looking to access through early college credit. And neither of these two have access credits under Start College Now. So they, this would be their first foray into post-secondary credits outside of our transcribed and AP classes.
Vicky, any questions?
Nope.
Steve? I don't want to assume, but I'm guessing they're both good students.
They're both good students, yeah. One of the others, thank you for saying that. Students can't gain access to this program. I mentioned stipulations. They have to have a certain grade point average. They have to be in good standing with the high school, and the state kind of makes that a nebulous definition. So for us, that's attendance, behavior, the soft skills of follow-through. Both of these students more than exceed both of those criteria. Student number one is looking to graduate early next year. So this has been something that for the past year and a half, they have been accelerating their credits, taking more classes than we offer in a typical school day, just so they could get to this point.
Great. Thank you.
Shear, any questions?
Um, I don't think so.
Tanya?
You know, I don't, I don't have, well, maybe I have one question. It's not really a question, but I just think this is probably a good opportunity to highlight some of the good work our school counselors do in planning to get kids to this level. And so maybe you could talk a little bit more about it, but it's just, this doesn't just happen naturally. We have people that work really hard to make sure that kids have, these opportunities are lined up. And in the past, I don't know, handful of years here, we've increased our school counselors because they're really important in the planning of our, our kids. Is there anything you can share about that process?
Yeah. Well, one of the things that we try and do, and it goes by different names in different districts, a three-plus-one plan, a four-year plan, academic career planning. We use a program called Zello, and it works in conjunction with Infinite Campus and our counselors, really to try and engage students as soon as they're coming out of eighth grade to look at their next four years and do some planning about how to get to different levels. And everyone's got different goals, so it doesn't have to be to get to early college credit. But we certainly do have a lot of students who identify, like student number one, I want to graduate early because this is what I want to do at college. And so both of those programs and our counselors really work hard to try and make that a reality. In addition to that, a lot of our counseling services are working more to push into our cardinal time to talk about those sorts of opportunities with kids. And we certainly would like to be able to do more of that. One of the things Dr. Spicuzza and I talked about in this case is this is actually a fairly reduced list than what we normally have. Typically, we do registration in January, February, and for, for this year, we've pushed it back. So we will actually begin that process next week. So I would anticipate, just a heads up, that I might be back in the next two months presenting more students who want to access these classes because we do try and highlight this, both in a, in a, in a whole group setting when we're talking about registration, but then in cardinal times with their homeroom teachers, as they're meeting with their counselors to develop their next year's plan. These are kind of central opportunities that we're trying to highlight for students in addition to our transcribed and our AP classes, and then some of our ancillary classes like music, fine arts, tech ed, that are less typical. So.
Thank you for sharing that. And we had, during our open mic kind of discussion at the beginning, we had a guest speak on this. But really, public schools have a responsibility to meet kids where they're at. And we have, you know, a little over 400 kids in this building that are all coming in at different places. And it's really cool to see that we have a student one who's came in and said, this is my, these are my goals. And as a public school, we're able to meet those needs and help that student reach those goals. We have other students, and I think that we talked about this with special education in one of the last couple board meetings, where we have some students that they need to, in order to meet their goals, continue with us up until they're 21 years old. We provide services for them. And so it's just a really good opportunity to showcase that public schools are, are here for all kids. We do all kinds of things, and that we have quite a team of professionals that really meet kids where they're at and get them to those next steps, no matter what they are. So really cool. I always love hearing this. Thank you.
Pat?
Josh, I think answered my big question. He said you'd probably be back to us with a few more. I was just curious. So, because obviously, these are credits for next fall semester.
Correct.
And then, you know, Rick, are these, are these, are these in this year's budget? Is it next year's budget? How do we, how do we do that?
Yeah, beat next year's budget.
Next year's budget?
Yep.
And I'd just be curious, whenever we think it's done, I just, I'd be, for just curiosity, how did, how did this budget align with the last couple? Just out of curiosity. So whenever that happens, we can talk about it.
Certainly. And Josh?
I was just gonna say, one of the things I'll try and do, if it would be helpful, because I, believe it or not, I save all of these tables, is I can look at kind of a three or four-year trend. For us, I can tell you, last year when we presented in March, there were nine students seeking access to this program. So because they're, they do have fairly rigorous stipulations on how you access the program, it's not, not everyone qualifies for those classes. But there is a significant portion, especially when you have extremely talented students like we do, that that is possible.
And just we put in the plug, April 4th?
April 4th, yeah. This, this coming Monday, we have a registration evening up at the high school. It begins at 6:30 to 7:00. We'll be all together in the auditorium here, and I'll just give out some general information. And then we're going to run this one open house style. So we'll have tours around the high school to some of the unique facilities that we have that are, either families haven't seen, and they've had kids up here, or they're transitioning from the eighth grade to the ninth grade, and so they've never seen these facilities. Our fab lab, our tech ed facilities, our science labs, our art studio. Most people don't know that our music facilities have a professional recording studio, and that our kids frequently are creating and laying down tracks in there. So just seeing some of those areas, we'll have breakout sessions highlighting some of those areas and some specific information for ninth graders who are transitioning, as well as juniors who are looking at post-secondary options and, you know, what, what information would I need for that? A lot of that will take place out in the commons, or our departments will be out there. They'll be hosting tables, and families will be able to kind of freely float around and explore the different things they want. But then, like I said, we'll have designated breakout sessions to get more specific information on certain pathways or certain department's course offerings. And that'll be from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So it'll be a little bit of a choose-your-own-adventure when you come up here on, on Monday night. And we're hoping to see, especially our students who are currently in eighth grade and going to be ninth graders next year, but there's certainly a lot of opportunities for our students who are still currently in ninth grade through 11th grade and will still be here next year. We've added six new courses next year. So we're consistently trying to add more opportunities. There's some really exciting things, from new things in the fine arts to new things in tech ed, and even some of our core classes that I think will be really great for our, our students. So I hope they have the, the chance to come up here and talk to our teachers and, and see where those things would happen.
All right. Thanks, Josh.
Yep.
We'll need a motion.
I move to approve the request for early college credit program for the 2022-23 academic year.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries on item H, consider pandemic pay stipend for our employees.
Yes. So at the beginning of my remarks, under Good News, I just shared the gratitude that I have for the staff of Prescott School District. As you know, the front lines, I shared with all of you as board members podcast. It was eight minutes. But it was something I also shared with our admin team, and we discussed that for over 45 minutes. We have been disrupted for three academic years. It's only been two calendar years, but three academic years. Our, I know as a board, you have been strident in trying to identify ways that we could financially reward some of our staff that have been here and filling in for each other when we didn't have subs. In that eight-minute podcast, our administrators, you know, have been subbing each and every week. We've had them doing bus duty. They've been doing, and in that podcast, you heard about a principal doing French class and doesn't know how to speak French. So in that, we wanted to also thank and to reward and acknowledge the different hourly staff that we weren't able to do at the beginning of the year due to a lot of transitions. So Sue Gertis, who is now the head of the financial department, has been able to start to catch us up on our finances. And with the ESAR funds being able to fill in some of our holes, it is in kind of partnership with the school board that we would like to propose a $400 stipend to each and every hourly employee that is currently working with us and would still be here as of May 30. So there are some business rules with it. It's a one-time allocation of $400. It's targeting five areas. It would be our front office administrative assistants, our bus drivers who have been able to keep every single route coming and going, our custodians who have done a remarkable job and oftentimes shorthanded, and Mike has done a great job overseeing them, our food service that was recognized earlier, and our teacher aides that are across all four of our buildings.
Vicky, any questions on this one? Comments?
I don't know if I really have questions. I'm just really happy that we've been able to do this, or that we are able to do this. A lot of these individuals have played a huge, huge part in the last few school years. So it's nice to be able to thank them, even if it is maybe a little towards the end of the pandemic and all the work that they put in. But I just want to say that I'm glad we're, we're able to do this.
Good comments. Steve?
I wish it could be more. Just two points of clarification, Dr. Spicuzza. The estimated total amount, and I understand it could be flexible a little bit depending on where people are at the end of the school year, and then just reconfirm where the dollars are coming from.
Yeah. So it would be out of our fund ten. So it would be within this year's budget. Some of this was freed up because we have been approved for ESAR dollars that it's covering costs that were already budgeted. The overall, are you asking for what the grand total?
Yeah.
Would be, it will be slightly under $40,000.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, there are some business rules, obviously. It would be any employee that's an hourly employee in those areas, as long as they're still here on May 30. A lot of that is just, it would be hard for us to go back, and we're trying to also allow payroll to do it. The only question I had is whether or not we wanted to do the whole 400 if they were here before January, you know, from the beginning of the year. Like our admin assistants, we had no turnover. They've been here with us the whole time, the bus drivers. Sometimes with the teacher aides and food service, we've had hires that come in, you know, since January. If you want to be, as long as you're working with us and here on May 30, to make it one flat rate across the board, we're happy to execute that.
Are you looking for some, some feedback on that?
Yeah.
Does anybody want to jump in on this one?
So from a pro-rate standpoint, if they were hired in?
Before January.
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
To appropriate.
Pro-rate? If, if they weren't here all of last year, I mean.
No, it'd be just within this academic year. So if they were here from fall, they would get the whole 400. And if they were hired after January, they get a portion.
Hired after January of 2022?
Correct.
Yes. I think that's, I think that's appropriate. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in on that.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I think just to make it a little bit easier, maybe it's, you know, $400 if you're here before that, $200 after, whatever you guys decide.
Whatever you decide.
300, whatever. I, I mean, I don't also want to make this super labor-intensive.
Yeah. No, there were a lot of scenarios we looked at, you know, month by month, talking with the administrative team. I think we really wanted to make this, everybody has helped us for whenever they came on because it just allowed us not to have to double up. So, but I think that there is a slight difference of some of the hires that are since January of 2022. And if you're okay with that, then we'll let, move forward. The payment would hit in June. Whether or not it be the June 15 or June 30, just to keep it in the fiscal year, it has to hit. I just have to work with payroll to make sure that they can turn around.
And I just wanted to add as a comment that we did do this for teachers, if I'm correct, at the very beginning of the school year at our school board meeting.
Correct. And that's obviously for personnel reasons, and also as we were building the budget. Sue didn't join us until a little bit later. So it is something that had been on the radar, and now that we were able to guarantee that we could do this without going into fund balance, that's why it's brought to you now.
I think it's great. I think it's very appropriate. I think this is a group of professionals that are really unsung heroes in our school districts, and especially the past couple of years. And I think we would be challenged to find one of these individuals that haven't done well above and beyond their, what's been asked of them in previous years within this past year or a couple of years.
All right. Thanks, Tanya. Pat?
No, no questions. I echo, echo everybody's comments. I'm in full support.
I'm in full support.
She, do you want to jump in on this one?
Um, I mean, I obviously believe that we can't really run our schools without these people, so I think this is really important and really cool that we're doing this.
Thank you. Yeah, 100% agree with all the comments, even Steve, I wish, more is always better. So this is great. I think 400 is a great number. Sounds like roughly, quick, easy math, is about 100 people get $400, I think if it's 40,000 of the budget, right? So that's a great story to tell. So, alright, thanks Rick for bringing that forward. Does anybody want to make the motion here?
I move to approve administration's recommendation to provide pandemic pay stipend of $400 per person if they have been with the school district for the entirety of the school year up until January and then after January, do we want to say a $200 stipend or do I have to specify?
Let's just leave it at the?
At the discretion of administration for hourly employees who are currently working for PSD and are still with the district on May 30th, 2022. This pandemic payment is to recognize and acknowledge all hourly staff for preserving, for persevering, sorry, during the 2021-22 school year. This payment is targeted to the following areas: administrative assistants, bus drivers, custodians, food service, and teacher assistants.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries, thank you. We'll move on to item seven, information and discussion, and the first item is to consider future allocation of funds for crosswalk signage installations.
Yeah, this is one of those projects that mushroom, kind of like some of the things that Andrew brings forward to you. Jane Henner-Lite, one of our aides that works down at Malone Elementary, also serves as a crossing guard. As you know, in the morning, we've had to put up signs. Tim has had to identify people that have gone through some of the stopped arms and we're often concerned, specifically in the dark and also in the kind of fall and winter of just cars and traffic that don't always abide by the crosswalks. So Jane brought this to Sarah in my attention. We met with her, got some information on a program that was done in River Falls, again in great partnership with our businesses and community, met with City Hall and the police department. We have identified three points that we would like to put crosswalks. These would be the crosswalks that can be activated with a button, sends off kind of the LED lights. As that project was discussed, it was initially at, on Campbell for Malone Elementary, but then we started to talk also about with the new development that's going in by Joy Lutheran and having students come into the intermediate school. We wanted to make sure that there were signs put in there. In that discussion, the city has also come forward in that they would like to put a sidewalk on the opposite side of the football field that would go from Campbell to, and I'm going to forget the name.
Philkins.
Philkins. That street is kind of the entrance into the new sub-development and also has a sidewalk. They would, the city, would be taking out the current sidewalk that is perpendicular to the football. So on the graphic behind me, the main reason for taking out that sidewalk is to make it kind of, if you will, just kind of discourage individuals and students for kind of walking down where buses are coming in and parents are picking up the students. The reason I'm bringing this forward is that there is a cost, but between us and the city, we've agreed that we would split the cost of the signs. The sidewalk removal and the sidewalk installation is at the cost of the city as they continue to try to make more friendly and serviceable walking areas around the city. So at this point, I just wanted to kind of let you know that the locations are kind of been identified. We are also looking at adding some additional signage and where the students are, Sarah, coming up between on Kenny Connect on the hill, there'd be a flashing sign that we'd like to have added, kind of like what they do as you head down towards the bridge where it drops to 30 miles an hour. Our cost would be about $15,000 with it installed.
Steve, any questions or comments?
I just think it's interesting, some of the costs are, everything's 6607, but it'll be on that, it seems like a safety thing and I know we've had a few issues or close calls that, you know, we need to do whatever we can to avoid. So, you know, I would ask the typical question of where's the 15,000 coming from, Rick?
Yeah, at this time, we would probably have it come out of facilities. I think as we, we're still, Sue is still trying to catch up on our overall funding. We have been blessed, I guess, to have some surpluses coming in, although it's going to be harder in the next few years. I think it's worth that with our fund balance, if we have to, to come back to you. This is, you know, for discussion, but to, to let you know, it's a two-part, so the city council is going to be bringing it for business to them in April and I would be coming back to you. But I think that I would highly doubt that we'd have to dip into fund balance, but if we did, I would hope that we could on safety.
It looks like there's a few residences that may be somewhat affected, so I just want to be sensitive to that as well, but I guess in my opinion, it's just kind of a no-brainer, we need to do this for safety. Thank you.
Yep. And, and Steve, that's a good point. Just because the sidewalk would be moved across, the city is requesting that a letter be sent out, that's why this is an information discussion and then allow, I can tell you that Mike Koika and the city have talked, the city went out the next day and did talk to the homeowners. There was some question about runoff and things like that, but they were able to clarify that with two of the homeowners and at this point, we haven't heard any concern about the sidewalk being moved to the other side.
Well, I appreciate the partnership with the city too, so.
Okay. And I think the last piece would be, is the letter that would go out to the city. It is, all of it is really city-directed. We're partnering on the money. They are asking for either the school board or myself to sign off on a joint letter. Do you have any concerns about having that letter be in partnership?
I do not.
I don't think we would.
No.
It's good form.
Okay.
Alright, Steve, anything else?
No, thank you.
Vicki?
Um, no, I guess that was my bigger concern too, was where, we were going to access the money to pay for this, but yeah, I, if we can partner with the city and the city can spearhead this and we just are helping do our portion for our kids, I think that's great.
She?
Um, not at this time.
Tanya?
Um, I, you know, we've never really, I don't recall done a survey that specifically asked this question, but I do hear a lot from community members, concerns with the paths to school and safety and stuff like this and the lack of sidewalks just in general. And so for me, this is something that I think resonates quite well with especially our younger students within our district. So it makes sense, we're a growing community. This is a very busy intersection within our town, so we have our, our two most vulnerable buildings in way of kids, it, right there. So this is great. I, I love that. Again, just a really good partnership again tonight, so.
Pat?
No, I appreciate the partnership. I think we've already talked about the money. I, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't, something strikes me, the location of the crosswalks are, yeah, I get it from a leaving school perspective, but there's also, you know, there's athletic events on Saturdays during, during the nights when it's dark and by removing a crosswalk and removing a sidewalk, it doesn't make a ton of sense to me, but I don't know, Rick, if there's any way we can ask a couple of questions back to the city, I just, I don't know who designed it, there's probably a really good reason for it. I just, I struggle not having a crosswalk between, I think, the football field entrance and the intersection at Campbell.
Oh, no, they still would have crosswalks there and that's where we put the signage.
Doesn't that, doesn't it say remove crosswalk?
But then they put the, there'll be double signs, the yellow here, let me go back.
It just really looks like they're directing to across the street from the football down and then?
Right, that's all I'm saying is that pedestrians, if you leave the football field or the track area, you're not going to walk all the way to the east.
Correct.
To cross the walk, so.
And then cross the park.
It feels like we're removing a safety feature by doing that, but that's up for somebody smarter than me to decide.
Well, we can, Mike Koika and I can work with Matt Wolfe and Chief Michaels.
Yeah, as long as we bring it up and ask the question, that'd feel good. Thanks.
Rick, when would this be underway? Did that get discussed at all? Like are they projecting the summer?
Depending on their meeting and approval, if it goes through, they would like to do something this early this summer.
Okay.
So it'd be ready for the fall school year.
Great. Sounds. Alright, thanks. Uh, we'll move on. Item B, last district informational meeting will be tomorrow night.
Yes, so board, you're welcome to join us for, we've had three open houses at each of the three buildings that we're asking the community to invest in our schools and secure our future. That election is on April 5th. As you know, tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:30 in the high school commons, we will have representatives that have been partnering with us, Mark and Johnson, who is our project manager, River Valley Architects, and Baird Financial. We're looking forward to answering any questions and clarifications. Obviously, there's no official school business that will be occurring, but this is more about information and allowing people kind of in a question and answer format to be able to come up to each of these representatives and get clear answers about the no-cost impact on taxes. As you know, this process has been, for this referendum is going on three years plus. You had a comprehensive facility study. You know that Malone, the intermediate and the middle school on average are over 56 years old. We've had community surveys and input. We know that, based on that input, that there was support for investing in our buildings, but it had to be under a $16 million and it also needed to be essential needs. You commissioned a facility advisory committee. It was made up of community members. That facility committee identified high priority areas for infrastructure that really is the envelope, our roofs, our windows, our doors, our tuck pointing, which is the mortar between the bricks, to make sure that we take care of our facilities for the long term. In addition, what we're asking for is, and there was a recommendation by our facility advisory committee, to have you have permission to sell a $15 million bond. The age or range of that bond, whether or not it's 15 or 20 years, will depend on the market. In addition, we know that we are at historic low, lows on interest, but there already has been movement by the feds. They have gone up a quarter of a point and they have talked about going up six more, making six more adjustments. So the time is right. We're looking at keeping the operational budget for our people that you have seen and acknowledged and recognized here tonight, the programs that you have seen embedded in our K-12 and discussed with our programs and obviously we have great schools here in Prescott with wonderful performance. So we are looking for, by the numbers of just asking our community to provide an investment in its four facilities of 15 million and we know that at this point, based on Baird Financial and our current status is that there would be a zero increase above current tax levels. This has a lot to do with debt that is falling off, the refinancing that you did a year ago and the prepayment and payment of bonds that were conducted this March. So as we remove those bonds, principal and interest, we would be replacing it, which is why it's a zero increase on the current tax rate. So a reminder, the voting information is April 5th. There are five municipalities. If you want to learn more, you can come to our website or the informational meeting tomorrow, as well as that there's absentee voting that is available and you can reach out to the polling area or go to our website. I want to thank Andrea Herzon for all the work that she's done in trying to, and Mandy Matzick, to maintain our informational base, our website, and keeping that updated with frequently asked questions and do you know tidbits.
Anybody have questions or comments on this one?
I, I just double checked and I see that it's not on this slide here for voting information, but I do want to just add that there is early voting up until this Friday, at least if you're here in town, it closes at 4:30 this Friday. So if you're like me and want to fit it in early, you can.
Rick, quick question on tomorrow's 6:30 to 8:30. So will there be kind of a kickoff presentation, if you will, like we did, like you did at the previous three, or is this kind of just open house style, nobody's going to miss anything if they show up at 7?
Yeah, this is, we're going to send it up more like a convention where there'd be booths of each of the vendors. And so the district will have an opportunity to run the video that was made with regards to just kind of describing the process and what we're asking for. Baird will be available. We will set up, if there's a group of people that come and we have similar questions, we will have folding chairs to do an impromptu presentation, but it really is the opportunity to go right to the experts and ask them questions.
And, and no part, no part of tomorrow will be, will be videoed or televised?
Correct.
Because I think, I think maybe a couple of us have gotten that question before, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Alright, let's move on. Item C, election update.
So it's kind of somewhat different, it's just reminding people that there is an election and Tanya mentioned that it's not only just the referendum, but there are also two board seats with four candidates that are running. And just to kind of remind people is that there are 38 districts across the state that are currently moving forward with referendum questions. A lot of that has to do with the way that funding occurs within the state of Wisconsin where we are funded solely for operations, but not for capital. As you know, Amory, Ellsworth, Osceola, St. Croix Central are all in the middle border and all have questions. Some of them have two questions on the ballots and if you saw the Pierce County Journal, Plum City is going for an operation question themselves and they are at the point where if they are not approved, they are talking about consolidating or having to close. So these elections are important. We're asking people to be knowledgeable about it and to remember that on April 5th, Tuesday, to make sure that they go out and vote.
Comments, anyone?
Well, yeah, along with the 38 districts, I found it really interesting that there's 81 questions, referendum questions. So that just goes to show that the, the funding needs are there for a lot of, a lot of districts and there's a lot of need. So, yep, I just encourage people to go out and vote.
Alright, thanks Vicki. Item D, feedback and debrief work session with Teamworks.
So at the end of February, we did have a work session with Teamworks. The agenda was about roles and responsibilities of kind of a govern, governance model and it talked about the legal aspects of how school boards are set up, the statutes that are in place, the mothership, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and then best practices. And then you participated with that being facilitated by Teamworks and wanted to see if there were just some shared understandings that you wanted to share out with the community and with the staff about that night.
And I can, I'll just jump in here, I, I'm looking at the, the document with the group priorities, I think what we got out of it, some of the, some of the things that we want to focus on in the upcoming, you know, months and, and year, I guess, would, we kind of listed out, having, having a session around long-term planning, you know, with facilities and capital. That was, that, that was a, a big one that seemed to resonate with many, with pretty much all the board members. How we self-govern, so policies around how the board functions and, and also communicates with public and staff was another one.
and, and, uh, also communicates with public and staff, uh, was another one. Um, and I think that there, a, a specific one around the calendar with, uh, for next year in, in lieu of the, the suggested two-hour, uh, I guess it would be early release or delay is how we, how it was listed here on the, on the sheet. But, um, does anybody from the, anybody on the board here want to, want to jump in? Is there anything that you wanted to kind of touch on here, or? I think it was a good workshop.
I think it was great. I, we haven't really had the opportunity in the last couple of years. We had talked about this, and we hadn't really had the opportunity to sit down and really discuss things and what we're thinking, what we want to do, and what we should be doing. And this was really helpful for me. Um, so, yeah, I, I look forward to being able to continue and, and have more, I think, sessions like that to help us figure out a direction.
Anyone else?
No, just a reminder that those are also open meetings. Pub, uh, public's welcome to come. And, um, it's in a, in the, well, we changed locations, I'm sure, but, um, they are public.
Yeah, um, remind me where we left off after February twenty-third. Yeah, we said, I think we were going to try to find another time to resume, but I, I could be mistaken.
Yeah, so I think the takeaway was Rick, myself, and Christine from Teamworks, we're going to kind of get together and try to put together a, a plan for how we can get more of these workshops on the calendar, for things that we discussed and want to address.
Right. Awesome.
Yep. Yeah, and, and it's really in the spirit, for those on the call, for those on the, you know, on the feed, it's really in the spirit of just board development and trying to, um, improve how the board functions and operates and, and just make sure we're, we're doing some self-reflection and, and, uh, trying to do, you know, make sure that we're, you know, seeing blind spots and, and, um, doing what we can to work efficiently and, and function smoothly as a board. So it's an, it'll be an ongoing, hopefully an ongoing process, um, as we, you know, as, as, on, on an annual basis or on a monthly, annual basis. So we'll continue to have workshops that, that we dedicate for board development.
All right, Rick, did you have anything else that you wanted to?
Nope.
Share with that? Is that good? Okay, let's move on. We're at item eight, recognition of visitors. Anyone in the audience care to be recognized? All right. Um, I think we're going to make a motion to adjourn, and then you're going to play a video, Rick, after the adjournment.
Uh, Mr. Flaherty is going to be able to run that, uh, right through the tricaster.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, Kerry, we're done for the night, and enjoy the video.
As alumni at Prescott, I have a lot of great memories going through this building, through these buildings. Uh, memories of teachers that have had a huge impact on my life, uh, friends playing sports. Sporting events were some of the funnest times I've had here. Those are some of the best memories I have. Uh, I just remember the student sections being so loud and having a lot of fun. Um, and now when I go to games, I see that same spirit and that same energy out of the students these days. And, and it's just, it's really fun to see. It's electric. The atmosphere is amazing.
So understanding public education funding is very difficult and challenging, but let's break it down into its key components. Operational funding is how Wisconsin funds its public schools. Operations are all about people, programs, and performance. We are very proud of our academic performance. Our academic performance places us in the top fifteen percent of all of the public schools within the state of Wisconsin. We also have to take care of our wonderful facilities. And daily maintenance by Mike Koika and his crew has been outstanding. When you look and enter into our schools, you see that they sparkle. The floors are outstanding. We are at a point, however, that many of our three older buildings have machinery, infrastructure, roofs, that are twenty-five and thirty years old. Those are generational costs. And those generational costs are only able to be filled and, uh, taken care of by asking the community to invest in its facilities so that the expectations of how our facilities look and are maintained are at the level that we expect for our students and staff. We're looking at a capital investment right now for April so that at historic lows, we will be able to access fifteen million dollars to invest in our buildings to make sure that they're top-notch and match the expectations of our community. We've made promises before, and we've kept those promises. The money that has been passed historically, we've been able to prepay on our bonds, which has lowered, uh, taxes overall. We saved our community over one million dollars' worth of taxes. We are set at a situation with our fund balance, our low interest rates, and the possibility of adding fifteen million dollars to invest in these wonderful buildings at no increase to our taxpayers.
If funds are approved, we'll use them to make necessary repairs like roof replacement, repairs to the exterior of the buildings, along with replacing heating, cooling, and ventilation equipment that's beyond its life expectancy. We'll also replace emergency equipment that's outdated, fire alarm systems, backup generators, along with repairs to our electrical, plumbing, and any ADA compliant issues. The facilities committee spent months reviewing the twenty-nineteen facility study. And out of that study, they made up a prioritized list for each need at each school site. And out of that list, they made a recommendation to the school board to go to referendum. To put it quite simply, these are all necessary repairs we need to make to keep an operational, safe, and climate-controlled environment for our students.
The facilities advisory committee spent months reviewing the needs of the Prescott School District. We simply cannot ignore the basic needs of our school system. I moved Prescott because of the education system. Two of my children have master's degree. I would like to see Prescott continue with the exceptional education they're offering the youth of Prescott.
The last voter-approved referendum for the old high school, which is now the intermediate school, was in two thousand and four. The Malone was in two thousand. So it's been, it's been over close to twenty years for both buildings. That's over a generation ago. This community has always been so supportive of our schools. It's just truly amazing. Now we're asking for the community to support us once again, to help us support the next generation so they can have the same experiences that we had.
We're asking you to consider the facts, invest in your buildings, and invest in the people, the programs, and the performance that you expect.